Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the April 13th, 2021 Board Meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is a beautiful day out there. Glad to see everybody did return back from spring break. We have for us an agenda. Is there any necessary changes?
No changes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Ash Song?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, a second by Darla. All in favor? That's approved. First up, we have presentation and discussion with Policy JB Student Attendance Revision with Tim Keiser.
Good afternoon. So this policy was last updated only a year ago, but we had a few minor updates, most significantly section on virtual attendance. So we have virtual learning being one of our educational settings for next year. This statement, it encompasses somewhat of how we will take attendance, but most importantly, the expectation for virtual attendance. And accompanying the educational setting survey that was sent out on Monday to all families was a virtual participation agreement that those families will have to agree to. And it gets into the specifics of what is expected for students in terms of participation to satisfy attendance, and of course, the regulation will include those details also. Further down through it, it's mostly just removing certain statements that make it more accurately reflect what we practice, and then also the renaming of our Student Attendance Protocol Committee to include school climate. Do you have any questions?
I have a question, and maybe this is in the more of the information that you send out to the families who choose virtual. But I know that now, or last semester, it was that the child or the parent had to select, that they were present. Are you, have you thought about if it's going to be the parent or the teacher who's going to?
So those details will be part of what, you know, there's a statement in here that talks about expected to engage in lessons. It talks about what's communicated at the beginning of the course. But there will still be, will be that expectation that if it's, say it's four lessons throughout the day, that it would be, and that's just an example, that would be three of those four, that yes, there would have to be active participation in that lesson.
Okay. Either the teacher, or they would have the student go in and say present, whichever the course.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right, so since it's a policy, it'll just sit out there for a month.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. Next up, we have PBIS update, SAS update with Todd Shirley, Steve Hahn, and Tara Davis.
I want to start by thanking all of you for giving us the time to be here this afternoon. I am trying to, Sandy? It probably would help if I could see it.
Your glasses, right there.
She just said I need my glasses. What?
Right there, double click, yeah.
There you go. Guys, I just want to, I want to start by saying, and I'm not, I'm not up here, but just a minute or so. It is an honor and a privilege every day to come to Forsyth County to serve this district as the Chief Operations Officer, and it is an honor that the heaviest burden on my shoulders would be the safety and the security of the students and staff and all the stakeholders of this district. I know that it is your number one goal as a board to, for us to ensure that. I want to take just a second to introduce you not to my department, but truly to my family. Every day, I am happy to come to work, and I am happy to come to work because of the people behind me, and I would never call them anything but family. The SASs that serve your school district. Mr. Phil Smith, would you mind standing? Ms. Paige Cash, Ms. Beverly Maloney, Ms. Ashley Robinson, and Ms. Jessica Stowe. Those people come to, those people come to schools every day, and they hear nothing but heartbreak, and there are a lot of tears shed in our office. There have been a lot of tears shed in our office the last month, and they are truly the backbone of what we are here doing. The next member of my family, Mr. David Fearbach. David is our school safety coordinator. He's taken over many of the roles that Tim Monroe vacated when he went over as Director of Food Nutrition. David handles all our tribunals and assists Ms. Tara Davis with PBIS still because he was very instrumental in getting that program up and going in a stronger, stronger way than what I even left it. Our newest member, Ms. Tara Davis, we stole Ms. Tara from the state, and when you guys say hire the best of the best, we hired the best of the best. She is a PBIS expert and a climate expert, and we are honored to have her on staff. And finally, last but not least, Mr. Steve Hahn. Steve has been with me the longest of anyone, as evident by his receding hairline that he will not admit that he has. Steve took over as Assistant Director of the Department and, on a day-to-day basis, ensures the safety of all the students and staff in this district, and I am honored to say that he is the best, as well as everyone else in this group. I am now going to turn it over to Tara.
Thanks, Todd, for that introduction. It's very nice to meet all of you, and thank you for giving us the time to meet with you and talk to you about the work that we're doing in school safety. Our mission is to really help create and maintain a safe, orderly learning environment for all of our students. And you can see, these are the goals that have been set forth for us, especially specifically related to PBIS and our SASs. As we go into the presentation, it's important, I feel, that I talk to you about school climate. So a lot of times, people like to talk about school climate and school safety as separate, but they're not. In order to have a positive school climate, you have to have a safe learning environment. And I'll give you an example, a very short story about what I'm talking about. I was working with the high school principal down in Fayette County that was implementing PBIS at his high school. One morning, very early, 6:45, he opens his building, and he goes up to the door, and there's this young lady wrapped in a blanket outside the front doors of the school. Of course, he, you know, gets her in and starts talking to her, and is like, what happened? Why are you here? And she said, well, something happened to me at my home the night before, and this was the only place I felt safe to come. So school climate, when we talk about safety, it goes beyond just SROs and Raptor systems, which are super important. But school safety and climate is about developing relationships with students. It's about developing a proactive, positive school environment. And when we talk about that, a framework that we use to do that is positive behavior interventions and supports. Through the, through PBIS, we help schools develop a host environment, and this environment helps schools look at what is going on within their system, and what can we do to develop proactive preventative strategies across campus. But also, it's really about, you know, it's helping students, their behavior, their social emotional learning, but it's helping adults have a different lens on how do we approach students and their needs. And so it brings me to discuss with you how we are working with all the departments. So school safety, we're working with student supports, and TNL, and special ed, and diversity, equity, inclusion, to really help our schools align the work that all of our departments are doing, because all of our work together is just going to enhance our schools and help our students have better outcomes. So with that work, we help schools develop a tiered support system, just like with academics. So for PBIS, we work, we work on the whole school environment, then we work and help groups of students, and then we help address and work with students that have the most intensive needs. And in our department with the SASs, that's a great example of working with students that have the most intensive needs. Currently, within our district, these are the schools that are implementing PBIS. You'll see that it's K through 12. Some of the schools have been implementing for five years. Our newest member is Whitlow, just finished training them in March. Next year, current, we will have, these six schools definitely have committed, and I'm working with three more, hopefully they will commit to that as well. So it'll be a very large cohort for next year for adding on those schools. It's important, though, I wanted to give you an idea of, if you walk into a PBIS school, what does it look like? What am I looking for? These are the core elements that when a school goes through training, that we train them on. And really, it's helping schools look at their system and putting these core components in. Every school will have a team of stakeholders that represent their population, and they will do the work and help with professional development and looking at data to make those changes within their schools. Any school that you walk into that is PBIS, you're going to see school-wide expectations, and these are from our schools across our county. So if you, you know, if you go into Forsyth Central High School, they're the Bulldog Best, and that's what they, they refer to PBIS, and they ask students, are you doing your Bulldog Best today? So that's how, that's the language they use. Just finished doing a student circle group there, and they know Bulldog Best. They can talk about it. They know what it means. But these are their, these are expectations. You go to Chest City, you go to Silver City, and West, you can see them all up there. The other thing that you're going to see when you go to schools is what we call a matrix, a school matrix. You're going to see those class, those expectations on the side, and at the top are, those are areas within the school building that the schools have identified that they need to have some specific rules for students. And it's not just for students, but it's for staff as well to help them know what they're supposed to be redirecting students on. So it's going to look very different at a high school than it does at an elementary school. And so as I go through this, you can kind of see, and you can, you have this for your records to kind of glance through, but you're going to also notice that they're all different. PBIS, it's important to notice that it is not a program, it's a framework. And because it's a framework, it can be adjusted every school to meet those schools' needs. And that's really important to give schools autonomy for implementation. The other thing is, it's not just about, we have expectations, we have these rules, but it's about teaching the, not just expectations, rules, but the social emotional learning skills that students need. Because we would never just give our kids the keys to the car at 16 and say, go for it, right? No. We need to teach our students what, how we want them to behave, and the social emotional learning skills that they need, whether it's self-regulation or whatever it might be. A lot of our schools use social emotional learning curriculum, and whether they're using Leader in Me, or Seven Mindsets, or whatever it might be, it just enhances the PBIS framework because they just can, they teach that, and they teach expectations and rules. We are teaching skills to students, often skills they don't have, and we're going to, and we're teaching those to them. The other thing that we have part of the PBIS system is a method and a way to acknowledge students, but we also acknowledge staff. And the thing with acknowledgement that's important to recognize is that everybody likes to be acknowledged. So PBIS, there is a myth out there that, oh, we're just going to bribe students to behave. That's not true. So what we, with the acknowledgement system, schools can make it as glamorous as they want, or as simple as they want. So everybody likes, for example, we talk about in our training, we talk about the love languages. Everybody has a love language, whether it's just to say, you know, hey, you did a great job, and that's what I need is that verbal feedback, right? Some people like tangible things. That's how that, that's, that's how they receive feedback. Everybody, sometimes, you know, I'll get a text message from Todd, and he'll say, great job, and I'm like, oh, I'll save that. Like, I screenshot it because that's important to me. That just gives me that verbal feedback that I, that I need, right? But if you walk into any of our schools, these are some of the things that our schools do, but I love the ones that they do for staff, and staff love it. Like, this is at Mashburn, they have an MVP staff member that they recognize. At Brandywine, the teacher gets, you know, the crown and the stash for the day, and flowers, and they make a big deal out of it, and staff really appreciate being acknowledged. I know many teachers that I've talked to, if you were ever a teacher, I'm sure you have a folder that has notes that either kids gave to you, or even your, like, principal gave to you, and you have them in that folder, and you open it up when you're having a bad day, and you're like, this is why I became a teacher, because people appreciate me. I love this one, tying in academics. At Matt Elementary, when kids earn points, they can go to the reading vending machine, and they can get, they can buy a book with the points that they earn. The other thing that we help schools develop is an effective discipline system. This is pretty robust, but remembering that discipline is about teaching the behaviors we want kids to see. We believe in consequences, but we also want to, again, make things consistent and pervasive across campus. So part of our discipline system is teachers agree that they're going to handle these behaviors within the classroom, and then the things that they need help with, they will then refer to the office as needed. And then we have another section where we get family engagement, student voice, community involvement. These things are all, we, these things evolve over time. The implementation of PBIS can take three to five years for a school to implement. It is not a magic pill, but it takes work because its systems change. The other thing that we do is we spend a lot of time helping teachers within the classroom, setting up those proactive preventative systems to help their students be more successful. So what are the results that we're seeing? So over time, in Forsyth County, we have definitely seen a reduction in office discipline referrals. We collect a lot of data, and I'm only showing you a very small amount, which shows, though, that we are increasing instructional time in the classroom. So that's an important part of what we look at. We also want to look at, are we implementing with fidelity? And yes, we are. I'm not really sure why those are, those boxes are black, but you can see from the bar graph that our implementation is increasing our fidelity of implementation, and there's tools that they use to take that. And so we have some goals, our next steps, you can take a look at that, but for the sake of time, I want to let Steve come up and talk about the amazing work that the self, the student advocacy specialists are doing. Do you, do you want questions now or later, if there are questions?
Now, if you, if anybody has any they want to ask Tara specifically?
Well, I guess I'm, I kind of feel relieved. I like that it's not just about rewards. I didn't realize to the level of detail that you lay out the rules and the guidelines. I mean, sometimes you have to state the obvious, and at each level, it's age appropriate to define what behaviors are expected.
Yes.
And it's sometimes that simple that you need to just say, here's what's expected, and in a positive way, and then here's the expectation, and here's the reward, whatever is appropriate. It's not like everybody gets a prize.
No.
It's not what it's about. And it takes time.
It does.
It's not just a simple implementation, so I like that.
Well, good. Yeah, I mean, I often tell, you know, you know, at home, everybody has their own expectations and rules, right? And at home, I don't teach my kids to crisscross applesauce or walk down the hallway on the right side, so, but when they come to school, we have to teach those. But sometimes, we, we assume that they know how to do that, and that, and so we're working on not assuming, that having the lens that we have to teach everything. And you're right, we don't acknowledge everything. Sometimes it's just a high five, great job. So thank you for asking that.
Well, I just want to add a comment. I also like how the PBIS includes the acknowledgement of the staff or the adults, because I feel like when children see staff or, like, teachers that they work with, or other teachers getting acknowledged and respected, I feel like that kind of just promotes a sense of respect for that student, for that teacher. You know, that, oh, they do, you know, hard work, and they do this stuff, and I think, you know, that's something that I just think is great, you know?
Yeah, and I'll plant a seed a little bit. We've been hearing a lot, especially after this year, of our new students, our virtual students, and how that integrates into this, how y'all can work with Ms. Taylor on social emotional learning and what that looks like, what do they need as a virtual student, what kind of connection to others in a physical way do they need? So, you know, kind of plant that seed now, because we're learning a lot this year, and I expect us to kind of implement that into the strategy, because we know we're going to do this in the future.
Yes, yes, and we have conversations about that quite often, so thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you very much. That was very interesting.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Steve Hahn with School Safety. Hairline is fine, in my opinion. Okay, I want to go through the Student Advocacy Specialist update with you. I know we have a few new board members since we started, but we started this program back in 1718. We're already going on, finishing our, into our fourth year. So we wanted to update you. These were a few things from the original, the purpose of why, as Todd introduced, our team back there, and what they do each and every day. Some of the core mission steps, you know, our, our original goal in starting this was just identification. We were blessed to get this from the board and Dr. Bearden after, after we had the Parkland shooting, and it was what can we do to fill those cracks? And one of the cracks was, can we identify from within any students that are in crisis? But built on that over the four years, now we've, we've brought in resources and alignments and coping skills and things, then we can take the next steps. And you talked about Ms. Taylor's team and student support, and Debbie Smith. All of those are important pieces that we can give those resources out to our students each and every day as we work through it. So this is the data so far through three, in just over a half years. We have been referred 1,357 students. Now, that does not mean that all of those students would be on our caseload, but it means that somebody saw something, could be coming from law enforcement, a teacher, could be administrative staff. So that is the amount of students, and it grows. We average almost two new referrals each day that we have had this program in place. So, but the way that we look at it is Tier Three is our top tier, and so we'll see those kids more often. My team will tell you that they see some kids five days a week. They'll come through, they may need to talk to them, they may need a hug, they may need some support with schoolwork, talking to a teacher, and in some cases, you know, we may not see a kid, but once a month and just check in, make sure they still know they've got that support and that friend system from within. The great thing about next year, with the support of this board, we're able to add a seventh SAS, Student Advocacy Specialist, with the addition of East Forsyth High School. So you can see the number, the actual locations going down for our team from 9.5 locations to 6.14. And that is a big deal. It helps our team breathe a nice sigh of relief because we were all going to visit Gateway, and that worked for us, but we're going to only have two people go right here behind us to Ace Academies and have those two support that school going forward, and it just allows us to be more efficient in our workloads each and every day. The other thing that's really taken up a lot of our time is our emergencies. You know, Sunday night, we may be dragging our whole team together to help one school and provide supports, and they're, they're gone for the whole eight hours, and so they're always willing and ready to do that for us, but those emergencies have creeped up to where it is something that we're dealing with quite often. Some of the other things that we did this year, we, we met with North Georgia College, and that's across all campuses, both Cummings, Delonica, and Oakwood, and we met with our Dina students, all their counseling teams, and we started to ask, how can we help those seniors take that next step and have that person at that college level? And that was a wonderful meeting. Really worked out well for us, and with the support of the lead council at North Georgia, they're going to get me in touch with UGA, and Georgia State, and Georgia Southern. We're going to create all of those contacts to help those kids that have anxiety or depression currently wanting to take that next step. We can help walk them onto the campus and actually go visit their person there. So we're not just stopping the support that this team gives, we're not stopping that after they leave here after graduation, their senior year.
And just to clarify, you mentioned when we opened East that the workload will decrease because you have an additional person, but, and while your workload is, I would assume, a little higher at the high school level, you actually service all levels, elementary, middle, and high?
Do, in a cluster setting, and I'll show you that in just a minute, how that cluster looks with a few changes for this next school year. So here is 2122 and how that's going to look with less schools. We do have one team member, Megan Yee, and she is not here tonight, but she will be leaving us at the end of this year, so we will be replacing her, so we have two new replacements. One is a current counselor at West Forsyth High School, and the other one is coming from GNETS program and also is a registered dietitian. So Courtney Knight and Jennifer DeLuca will be joining us, and we have set Courtney to work at the South Forsyth Cluster, and Jennifer will work North Forsyth Cluster. And that is my update.
I think for me, looking at the success, you can obviously look at the data, but more importantly, it's the feedback we get from the community, and I want to say that thank you to each one of you, because in the community, we hear it every day. I had a parent call us, talk called me the other day, and was talking about that one of you had gotten with their daughter and gave her the tools to be successful every day, and that right there, to me, is how you measure success of the program, is the, I mean, the data is good, but that's, to me, is how I measured the success. So thank you so much for what you do every day in the community.
I have to say, out of my 12 years on the board, I think this program has been one of the most impactful that we've ever had, and it's because the people that you have ended, I think I had a parent tell me a couple months ago that they probably saved their child's life. You know, they literally saved their child's life. She was crying, it was, you know, so, I mean, that's what it's all about.
And it's hard to measure that, because we don't know what that looks like when you're trying to put that down on a spreadsheet, the importance that they're making. I think Mr. Chaney said, you know, future principal at East Forsyth High School, even up to last year, says, I'm pretty sure we've saved two to three kids in my school, and so we definitely have a great team that is working, and they're so good at just forming that relationship, and that's the most important piece, is we're building soft skills with kids that we're moving away from due to technology outside, you know, our school system, and so trying to bring them back into conversations and knowing that somebody is tangibly there, that they can hug and talk to, and just having a solid person is real important.
I remember, probably was eight, 10 years ago now, when we were having our annual principals' meeting, and we sat there at a breakfast and asked them, what did they need to make their year better next year? And they talked about the need for more counselors, just the workload that they had. And at the time, we were coming out of the downturn, and there wasn't a lot of money, and we thought just they needed more counselors, and we knew at the time, though, we didn't know about this need, and when we started this program, we knew that this was a specific target, different need, but we didn't know at the time that having student advocate specialists taking care of the more critical needs would help take that burden off the normal counselors all days, is they could deal with the normal day-to-day issues instead of having to fight a fire, so to speak. It would take all their energy for something, as you're saying, when some emergency comes up and they can't deal with the vast majority of the population that day. So we think that your work is helping the rest of the counselors do the normal day-to-day work, which is still very important, but in a different way, so they can do the quantity as well.
There is no question about that. One student in crisis can take the time of one of our student advocacy specialists the entire day or more. And so if a guidance counselor is doing that, they're not meeting with any other students about college applications, or courses, or anything else. They're dealing with a situation in crisis, so that's, that's exactly what this is.
That's what they just, we heard at that meeting.
Right, right.
I want to say thank you for those words for the team, because they need that, you know, and the pick-me-ups as well, and we've realized how much of a struggle can be week after week to be in this job, so I'm glad they got to hear the words and what you guys are thinking about there.
And with Steve standing here, I do want to say one thing, no, don't go anywhere, your hairline is going backwards too. I do want to compliment Steve. He has done an amazing job being the primary leader of this group. The one thing I want to say, and I want to say this with our SASs in the back of the room, because a lot of tears were flowing a couple of days ago, and we know how, we know how difficult the last few days have been. One of the questions that bothers our SASs the most is for somebody to say, was that kid on your case, was that kid yours? Maybe the appropriate question might be, was that kid on our caseload or our radar? And a lot of times, we end up having to say no, because there's And a lot of times, we end up having to say no, because they're so silent now, and they're so alone in the world that they live in. But rest assured, every one of the kids in this district, as well as every staff member in this district, because our SASs are talking with staff members too. They're all ours. And we will, we have made that our mission, and we will never back down from that. And Steve's made that very clear to our group. And that is also the reason for the importance of PBIS in our office and everything that we do in school safety. We're not about handcuffs, we're not about guns and lockdown buttons. We truly are about getting to the heart of the kid and supporting those kids. And these guys are are the best of the best. So to you guys sitting back there in the back of the room, yeah, they're all ours, but we understand where you're coming from, and we know what you go through.
Of increasing that as well.
It is. The core foundation of what we do is dialectical behavior therapy. And one of the, one of the, one of the key components of dialectical behavior therapy is that you get together as a group and you are able to work through those things. So every Friday, we set aside, unless there is an immediate emergency, for this group to get together, and we sit and we talk with them. Sometimes we use that, utilize that time for training. Steve has programs for them. We have brought in DBT experts, we've brought in other experts, even Tara has deepened their knowledge of PBIS. But a lot of times, we're we're just choking down the weak and are just sometimes just laughing. I mean, that's, we've, we've got to, we have to.
Right. With over fifty-one thousand students and roughly eight thousand staff, that's sixty thousand people with six SASs. It's the numbers who just can't quite.
And the numbers that they have spoken to over the last four years exceed two thousand.
So it takes all the staff, all the parents, the whole community to help out.
Well, we appreciate you guys for the support. Thank you.
That's very good. Thank you.
All right, next, we have virtual learning plans for twenty-two, twenty-two with LeAnn Rice. Thank you all.
I'm a little offended they're not staying to hear.
They're going to go decompress.
So yes, it's that time. We're planning ahead for next year and looking at the options that we're going to offer. Yesterday, we sent our surveys out, so I'm going to tell you a little bit about our plans and what that'll be. As we usually do at board meetings, I wanted you to see the goals that we're working on. I think these plans address all four goals very, very clearly. Obviously, the first goal is safety for students and staff. We know that we're still in the middle of a pandemic. We want to make sure that our community feels safe with the different options we provide. As we're teaching the whole child, we want to make sure that these options are going to address not only their academic needs, but also their social, emotional, and physical needs. Goal three is a big one for us. We really take to heart how much time and work and money it takes to provide these services for students. And so we've, we've begun planning, we'll continue planning, but we want to make sure that the master schedules we create and the way that we utilize our staff really lets us be good stewards of the funding with our school. And finally, making our large schools feel small. We want every student, no matter which option they choose, to feel like they are connected, that they have a teacher who cares for them, and that they have classmates that they can rely on. So I'm going to start with elementary. Our elementary, we're offering two options next year, very similar to what we're doing this year. So families may choose to have in-person learning at school, the traditional face-to-face learning, or they may continue learning from home. And the virtual learning is very similar to what we're doing this year. We will offer three to four live synchronous lessons a day. A lot of the feedback that we've gotten from families is that time, interaction time, the live time with teachers has been critical. So we want to make sure that for our core courses, reading, ELA, math, that those are done live with mini lessons, with direct teaching. In the elementary levels, we also have one-to-one and small group sessions, especially with our reading program, with the ARC program, with conferencing, so that that would be an expectation, that students are participating in those lessons every day. We'd have a dedicated teacher. We don't want teachers that are teaching both face-to-face and at-home students in the same classroom. So that teacher would be a dedicated teacher for the virtual class. As we look at our numbers, we've had to do this in some of our north-end schools. We may have to combine students across schools. So for example, one school may only have five first-grade students. So they may combine with some other schools that also have lower numbers, and we'd have a teacher from one of those schools that would serve all of those students together in order to provide that virtual option. We are giving an option for families to return to in-person second semester, and that may entail a teacher change, just based on where our numbers are and what we're able to offer. Our only thing we're not able to offer this for is dual-language immersion. And that program is so, it's so critical to have the direct interaction, the language, everything that's in the classroom. It's so contingent on that. We were able to do that this year in an emergency status, but for the long-term benefits of the program, it's just not something that we're able to offer.
Do you think there would be an option, I don't know if anybody would want to, to go the other way, that they might start out face-to-face first semester and go the other way as well?
They could as well, and that would be an option. They could go either way. We do anticipate, just thinking about our environment right now, the initial numbers we've gotten, as I said, we just sent the surveys out yesterday, and I've reached out to a few principals. The numbers are coming in very high for face-to-face. But I think at this point, especially on the first day of the survey, if you know you're coming back face-to-face, you know, and you're signing it. If you're still thinking about virtual, you want to maybe see how the environment is, you want to talk to some people, or really think through your options, we may not see those numbers come in until a little bit later. But I anticipate that we may still have some families that aren't comfortable coming back in August, may want to wait as the vaccinations roll out, as more more in our community, see where the numbers are. Then they may feel more comfortable in January of next year. As we move to secondary, and this is middle school and high school, we do offer three options. So the traditional in-person learning here at school. And then we'll offer two different virtual options. This year, we had only the asynchronous option. And we did have a lot of feedback that parents saw what we were doing at the elementary level and really wanted that for our secondary level as well. When we've had schools that have been quarantined, and we've, we've put the the live synchronous teaching at Denmark, at Lambert, it's been very highly received. And so we want to offer that option next year as well. So that would be the third option, is bringing in that live synchronous virtual option for our middle schools and high schools. Of course, we'll still have the asynchronous environment, and that's through Forsyth Virtual Academy. So I want to dig a little bit deeper into the live synchronous, because that is going to be a change for next year. This will be offered through the base schools. So it is a virtual option. So you might see Riverwatch, call it their Riverwatch Virtual School, or the Lambert Hybrid Academy. So they're really trying to brand it and and have the students feel like they're still a part of that school. Those teachers would be teaching them from the base school. They'd have their schedule set up through the base school. We are expecting twenty to thirty minutes of live instruction per period. Some schools are going to continue a block schedule, so they would probably go more toward the thirty-minute live lesson. Some may have a seven-period day. Those may be closer to the twenty-minute live session. And so what a typical class period would be is if you're on a block schedule and you have four classes scheduled that day, you'll start each class period with a live lesson with a teacher, maybe doing a mini lesson, explaining what the assignment is, maybe pulling students in for a quick discussion or a review of what they did the day before. And then the rest of that time period is theirs on their own. That could be a time that teachers are available, that students can chat with them or talk about questions, or a teacher may be pulling small groups. And then the next period, the student would log into their next class. We do expect, if you're going to stay in this option, that you have to participate. You have to be a part of the live lessons every day. And so if you're a student that that likes that and you can commit to being online throughout your day, this is a good option for you. Unfortunately, not all courses will we offer in this virtual format. We've seen that this year as well, some of our CTAE, fine arts courses, and some of our AP lab courses, where you really need to be in, hands-on, doing the work. We just don't get the same level of understanding and mastery in a, in a straight virtual environment.
So you don't anticipate that you'll have, like, sixth graders from north and, oh, well, in the same class?
Now, we could, and this will be part of, and I'll show it on a later slide. Our principals will be getting together in early May. We're asking all of our families to do the survey by April thirtieth, and then our principals are coming together by level to look at their numbers. Now, just like we had with our elementary schools, some of our middle schools in particular have had a difficult time utilizing a full teacher for a full course. They may only have five, eight, ten kids that need a certain course. So I do anticipate that we'd have to share students across. It would still be a live session if we can make it. And that's where our our middle school principals have really been working hard to try to set, they'll have to set up a similar schedule if it's going to be a live course. If they can't offer it live, then they would offer it as an asynchronous through FVA. And it could be a teacher at their school that's teaching that asynchronously, or it may be a teacher from another building. I think a lot's going to depend on our numbers.
But a course like AP Chem is just not a course that you can do the chemicals at home. It just can't be.
Yeah, yeah. Or automotive. My son's in the automotive program.
Mom, just wonder kitchen blowing up.
Yeah. But you think about a course like automotive at Central. You know, that's a course you've got, unless you want your child getting under your car and taking things apart. You know, we want to be able to do that in a safe environment with the equipment and and teach them in that manner. And then again, our asynchronous environment, this is self-paced. It's through Forsyth Virtual Academy. You may have teachers from all over the district that are teaching these courses. In this format, assignments are posted, usually on Sunday or Monday, and they're due by Friday. So it's a weekly time period. The communication's going to happen through its learning, so there's no live expectation. So this is an option, if students really love that direct interaction, they want the instant feedback, this may not be the best option for them. It is a good option for students who can work independently, manage their time, manage their pacing, meet those deadlines on their own. And again, not all courses will we offer through FVA. We'll, we'll look and see how the numbers are, where the needs are, and be able to offer through that. So just to update you all on the communication, we posted a video on our district website before spring break outlining all of these options in detail. We've blasted it out on social media. Many of our schools have connected to that and shared that with their surveys. The surveys were sent to families yesterday. The schools have control of those surveys, so they're managing the responses as they come in. And we're asking families to do that no later than April thirtieth. One other point, the State Department of Ed has asked if we have students who are served through an IEP or an individualized education program, and they want a virtual option, we'd ask our campus managers to reach out and set up a meeting and just ensure that we're meeting those students' needs through that option. And so Sarah's department is working diligently with that. And again, just like with the elementary, we'll offer one opportunity to change your environment at the end of the semester. And this part is really, really important. I think, you know, for this year, we were in a time of unknown. We weren't sure what a virtual option would look like. We weren't sure what the face-to-face option would look like. But as we move into next year, I think we have a much better idea of what these options are and for the consistency for our students, for the consistency for our teachers and staff. We really want to make sure that we're maintaining those courses and those classes and those schedules for students. But we do want to offer that option to change at the end of the semester. As I said, when we get those survey results, then that first week in May, principals are meeting by level. They'll be looking at their numbers, they'll be looking at if they need to combine teachers or students, how they can group, group their students appropriately. Counselors, administrators are going to be busy building those master schedules in May and June. In a typical year, they're starting on those in February. So again, they're working very diligently based on the numbers that they're going to get in April, which is why we're asking parents. I know some have asked, why do we have to know by April thirtieth what we're doing in August? There's a lot of time and work that comes into these master schedules. Our high schools have some over twenty-five hundred students. And so to be able to make sure we're meeting everybody's needs and have a schedule that does that, we do need to start doing that in May and June. Schools will be communicating with families. So if a child signs up for a virtual option, they want a synchronous virtual course or an an FVA course, and that's not offered, then they'll talk. So for example, if my son had signed up for virtual and he wanted automotive, then one of the administrators or counselors from Central would call me to say, I'm so sorry, Ms. Rice, you know, automotive isn't offered in a virtual format. You can either come to the school, he can come to the school to take that class in a face-to-face, or you could choose another elective for that. What would you like to do? So they'll be working with families on those virtual courses to make sure that we're meeting, meeting their needs.
And you need that answer, like, right away, because that totally, until that decision's made, you can't figure out the rest of the schedule for the child.
Correct. So that's where, again, asking for these commitments by April thirtieth gives schools the month of May to follow up with families to make sure that we have the right schedule set up.
I think you touched on a question that I had, where the virtual, like, if a student wanted to be virtual but did want to take automotive, you're saying that virtual student could take an in-class course for that?
Yes.
So that what they would do is they'd register virtually and select automotive?
Yes.
And then would have to work with the, okay.
Yes, and so the, it's a lot of extra work on the schools.
It is.
But they want to make sure they're meeting the students.
No, but that's wonderful, the flexibility that that's being offered. So you could be a virtual and face-to-face.
Yeah, we call it, we call it hybrid. We have students doing it now.
They're doing band, they got it from their band.
Our fine arts courses are probably, and our CTA courses are probably the most common where you'll see that. And you'll see students that are doing their core courses at home, but they're coming in for band or chorus.
Oh, right.
Some of their pathways courses.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome. And again, our goal too is our, I would be remiss if I didn't speak to the amazing work that our teachers have done this year. They have taken, many of whom found out they were teaching in a virtual environment only a few days before school started. And they have worked incredibly hard to meet the needs of their students this year, whether they came to school face-to-face, or were learning from home, or were quarantined, or made a switch at different times of the year. Our teachers have been truly heroic. And what we would really like to do is make sure when they leave for their summer break, they know what they're teaching. And they know if they have virtual sections or face-to-face sections, then they can go home for summer and start planning and preparing for that and start a new school year fresh. And so again, with all of that information, we just ask that parents really thoughtfully and carefully think about these selections and make those decisions by April thirtieth, so we can plan for them in the best way possible.
So if I'm a parent of either K to five or six to twelve, and I read all this, and I'm still not sure what's right for my kid, who do I reach out to to get more?
Reach out to your school.
Your school.
I would reach out to either a teacher, you know, and if I had an elementary student, I'd probably reach out to my child's homeroom teacher to see how are they doing in school, whether it's online or face-to-face, are they struggling? Where, where do you see strengths? Where do you see struggles? I'd want to know how well they're doing learning on their own. Do they need a lot of help? Those kind of things. In middle or high school, I would certainly reach out to one of their teachers or an administrator or counselor in the building. And that's why, again, we wanted this, we wanted to start communicating last month, so parents could start thinking about that and then have people they could reach out to to talk.
So the sooner they're better, so they can get the.
Absolutely. Yes, and our principals have done an amazing job. They have been collaborating more than I have ever seen them. And they have worked on the communication plans with their social media, with their websites, with their campus messengers. They've been sending those out. I'm a parent too, so I'm always impressed when I see great communication coming from the schools. But I think they've done a great job of communicating as well. And I know they would love to address any questions that families have.
I know it's been a lot of work on you and staff, and it's amazing to see you guys come together, like you were talking about collaboration and working. But for me, you know, it's fifty-one thousand students in the school system. There's fifty-one thousand different situations going on. And by providing options, I think is what makes our community and our school system one of the best school systems. And it's because of your hard work and the, and the teachers and the principals and the counselors. They're all going to have to do this. They're doing it because it's a difference in our community. So thank you for all that, and it's definitely the right thing we need to be doing.
It is. I think the fact that we offer choice is tremendous. And you're right, every family has different needs. And hopefully, we're providing options that will meet whatever needs different families have.
And you took the feedback from this last year and pivoted one more time.
You did.
And, uh.
We do love to pivot.
But I think that's a nice, you've come up with a nice in-between solution for the parents that have wanted that and students, so thank you.
You are very welcome.
All right.
Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have the CARE three funding with Larry Hamel. And LeAnn's going to be in that too?
Yeah.
Okay. What you got, Larry?
Evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, um, the state senate and house, President Biden's signature passed the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. And within that act, the state of Georgia received about four point two billion dollars. Now, that four point two, three point eight was geared towards school systems. I call it the CARE Act three funds because it's the third group of money we've gotten. And we are geared to be granted about thirteen million dollars of that. That's nothing like the two hundred forty-two million dollars Gordanet's going to get. But then again, you know, it is some money we're going to get. With that money, there's a couple of things. There's a twenty percent set aside that LeAnn's going to talk to that has to be geared towards education intervention. And that's going to be about two point six million dollars. And that's going to be about $2.6 million. The rest of the money, we are recommending two things to do with it. One, we would like to have a local supplement to the state supplement of $1,000 so that we can pay a $2,000 supplement at the May paycheck to all the teachers, students, excuse me, teachers and staff. So they'll get a $2,000 additional payout in the month of May.
Combined with this between the two.
Correct. And that's going to cost a little bit over $7 million of that 13. The remaining money, based on what the CARE Act three says we can do is we would love to, there's two elementary schools that were not part of the E R U upgrade that we would love to do. That is Sharon and Shiloh Point Elementary School. Basically, what an E R U unit is, is it's a, it's an energy recovery unit that provides a 45-degree dew point in the buildings and controls both humidity, the temperature in the buildings, and also prevents mold from growing and keeps it cooling set point a few degrees lower to help save energy as well. Mike can go into more of it. There's a lot of detail you can talk about. It keeps the CO2 levels low, keeps the refreshing rate above state and federal standards in our schools. So that helps with COVID and everything else. But there's a lot of detail you can talk about that, and we could probably bore you for an hour on that, but I don't think we plan to. And I'm going to let Leanne talk to the 20%, but is there any questions on the other two sets of money that we had planned about?
No, just to clarify, since the state is giving 1,000, we would be, so it would be a gross 2,000, so after taxes, it would be less than that, but combined.
Correct. And the state money we're getting is a little bit less, so we're planning to use some of this CARE Act money and make up the difference for staff members who wouldn't have gotten the 1,000 from the state. Just to clarify, everybody will get 2,000 unless you're part-time, which in case you'll get 500, or if it's 490, excuse me, I have to go back and look, but you'll get about $1,000 if you're part-time. And there's not many of those people, but there are some.
That's a great clarification. Like the state is basically probably giving all state-funded employees, but like our, our S A Ss, for example, are locally funded positions, so I imagine the state is not giving them the $1,000.
Correct.
But we're probably.
We will give them the 2,000. Right. We give everybody 2,000 who's working. We're going to have a cutoff date we'll set to everybody who work on that day going forward, we'll get from the 2,000. We are following the state guidelines on how we're doing the 1,000 for them. So we're basically using the same state guidelines with the other 1,000 as well.
And the good news on this, and I know you guys know this, but I'm just saying it for the public, because of the cuts we had from state funding last year, we were unable to honor step increases for this particular fiscal year. And so now to end, end this fiscal year and give all of our employees the $2,000 between the two pots of money, I know will be very, very well received in our school system and our community, and our employees will be very appreciative. And I, I really appreciate the fact, because we talked about this individually and, and the board was so supportive of making sure that we invested the funds we're receiving in our employees and to, and to show our great appreciation, as Leanne said, for the heroic work they've done all year. So they're going to appreciate it, and we appreciate the five of you supporting it very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that 20%, we're not done planning. As you said, our department has been really, really busy. And so we are putting together a summer school program this year that will serve kindergarten through 12th grade. And a big part of that is the funding for transportation. That's been one of our largest barriers when we do any kind of summer school or summer opportunities, is being able to get the students on campus. And Michael Satterfield and his team have been wonderful to work with. And so we'll be able to provide door-to-door transportation. We won't have the hubs like we've done in the past. So students who are selected for the summer program will be able to be picked up at their bus stop and brought to the site school. For high school, our site will be Forsyth Central. For middle school, our site will be Atwell Middle. And then we are in the process of selecting five elementary sites spread geographically through the county. We'll have criteria set for students who will be eligible for the summer program. For our high school, that's a credit recovery program, so those students will be students who may not have passed their courses and need to use this opportunity for, for credit recovery. For elementary and middle school, as, as Larry said, this money is intended for students who have had learning loss and recovering some of that learning. So we're using data such as our E R L A data with ARC to look at students who are in the emergency section of their growth. We're looking at our Beacon data that runs from third grade to eighth grade to look at reading and E L, I'm sorry, reading and math. And students who haven't made significant progress. We'll also look at course grades in middle school, looking at students who didn't have, have high course grades. But that criteria is being finalized this week, and then we'll be communicating with parents hopefully in the next week or two. For us to be able to arrange transportation, we need to get the names of those students to Michael Satterfield's department by mid-May, which is a month away. So we'll be, our, our building leaders, our principals and A Ps will be very busy looking at this criteria, trying to find students that we feel would best benefit from this. Our summer school will start June 2nd and run through June 24th. We'll have a pre-planning day for teachers on June 1st. And then for our high schools, we'll offer a morning session and an afternoon session. For the elementary and middle school, we'll just offer a morning session.
So is this, is this like an invitation, like?
Yes.
But it can't be a parent saying, hey, can we, can, can I get my child in this?
Yeah, it'll be based on invitation. These are federal funds.
Based on the need of.
Held to the criteria. And we have to use consistent criteria across the district. So that's why we use data, like our E R L A in the elementary schools, we'll look at students who are not attract to be on grade level with reading. We'll use different quantifiable pieces of data like that. So we keep it consistent across the district.
Yeah.
And the good news about this plot of funds, it does not have to be spent this next fiscal year. We have some time. So if we, if we don't.
We have until September of 2023. And so what we'd like to do is go deep into the summer school experience this year with students right now. But then we also have next summer that we can, if this model works well for us, we can continue it next summer. We also anticipate that we'll be able to give schools some additional funding with their instructional extension funds that they use throughout the school. So different schools are using those funds for different things, such as after-school tutoring, Saturday school, before-school tutoring. And so we'll be able to amp up the funds that they have in their individual buildings.
That's great.
So the funds will cover the transportation, but also the teacher salaries?
Yes.
So how many teachers are you looking at?
Well, a lot. We will be, H R will be sending out an email to staff this week explaining all the different options for summer school. Our goal, and again, it depends on how many students we can commit to and how many teachers we can commit, but our goal would be for elementary students to, to have a five-to-eight ratio with a teacher. So five to eight students per teacher. At middle school, we'd love 10 to 12 per teacher. And with high school, we're looking at 12 to 15 students per teacher. So really trying to cut those, those numbers down to give more personalized individual attention.
See, another benefit of this side effect is it gives our employees an opportunity to earn additional income if they want to.
Yeah.
And so that, that is a certainly a benefit.
And how will you gauge the results? What kind of assessment are you going to do? How do you score that, so to speak?
Well, high school, obviously, it'll be, hopefully, they'll pass their courses. So we'll, they'll recover that credit. For elementary and middle school, we use whatever data we've used. So if it's the Beacon, which is our state assessment for reading and math in third through eighth grade, it's a formative assessment that we can use. We can use that as a pre and post. With elementary, we can use our E R L A data, so we can look and see if those students are growing on their levels with their power goals and things like that. So we'd want to continue a lot of the learning that we're already doing in the classroom with the programs that the students are familiar with. Our math program, we have Dream Box, which is a big piece of that, and so we can look at that data as well.
And this might be a newbie question, but do we offer summer school anyway? Or we've never offered a?
No, not for elementary.
Okay.
We usually offer, we'll offer a summer school for, for credit recovery.
Okay.
For high school.
Okay.
And we have different funding sources for that. So generally, we use Title IV funds for, for that summer school. This, we're able to use all of our CARES Act money for this, to pay our staff, to pay our site coordinators. The students also generally pay for summer school. We will not ask for any money for students at all. So it'll, it'll be no cost to our families.
Wonderful.
The transportation piece too.
Oh, yeah.
Huge.
It is huge.
And again, as Dr. Behren said, this will offer some of our employees an opportunity to make summer, make money this summer driving buses as well. And so it's kind of a win-win for our staff and our students.
The breakdown of this CARE is being 80, 20%. It somewhat mirrors what our budget normally does in our 70% and 90% when a personnel, people and construction, it's, it somewhat mirrors how we normally do our budget anyway. We're mostly people and students, so.
Yep.
It mirrors that. Awesome. Great.
Great.
All right, Larry. Speaking of money.
How the fun part?
How do we pay for next year?
Make it all happen. You know, I'm excited to bring this to you guys early.
All right.
That's accountant speaking there, though.
I thought we'd never hear those words austerity again.
So, um, I'm happy to announce that we're going to present the fiscal year '22 initial budget presentation. I've actually had this ready to go for a couple of days now and tweaked it a little bit, but this is just initial numbers only. So state numbers are coming in. I still got to reach out to Mary at the county level. You know how she is, she likes to hold those numbers close to her chest until the very end, but I'll reach out to her again, probably closer to the end of the month of April, and get another update from her on those numbers as well.
You've never had a presentation this early before, so you're on it.
Here we go. So let's just talk about the highlights out of glance for '22. So once again, we know that Forsyth County has been one of the fastest-growing counties for the last two decades. For '22, the population has stipulated on the initial form that the state gave us for '22 is they're giving us credit for 51,436 kids. Interesting bit information was the October CPI numbers, when they were counted, we were one of only two school systems that saw growth in October. Every other school system saw a decrease in the number of kids counted. And in fact, later on, when we show you the top 12 school system in this area and what we spend, because of the negative growth that A P S had in Clayton, we actually might surpass both of them next year. So we'll have to wait and see. I know Rockdale saw about a 4% decrease in their CPI numbers. It's pretty significant for some of the school systems out there.
We already surpassed A P S, so we were surpassing Clayton also?
Yes. Another thing we want to talk about is there is a step increase in this budget I'm presenting to you. There is not a cola, though. And the reason is, is we still are having austerity cuts through the Q B money we're going to get. The project, most of the projected increase in the budget is both for growth positions and new schools opening. That's almost 90 something percent of all the money you're going to see growth-wise in that budget. Local revenue was not impacted as heavily as we thought. In fact, we're going to end up this current year better off than we thought we do are, and we're planning for even a bigger increase in local revenue come next year. All the information you hear on the internet, both from CEOs of J P Morgan and the Wall Street Journal and the Federal Bureau of Banking or whatever, I think it's called, something like that, are talking about growth anywhere from 6 to 8% for the next couple of quarters going forward after the September, or after the second quarter of this year. So they're talking about everything's going to explode wide open. Now, the thing that's going to help us in the United States is international travel is still shut down. So if people are going to travel, they're going to be traveling inside the United States and spending a ton of money. So that's a good thing to think about. The county digest is still low. I'm sorry. State revenue has still been impacted by some large areas. Hartsfield Airport, International Airport, which is a huge revenue generator, is, is still not up to 100%. And there's certain production sectors in, in the Georgia that are still being affected, like the Hollywood production for films. The port's done better. It's come back greatly, but there was a while there where it wasn't doing as much importing as it was before. I'm happy to hear that the S K I, S K I plant got approved. There was a, for the energy batteries that are going to produce here in Coming. That is a $2.4 billion project, that's got final approval both at the state and federal level. So that's going to help us a lot. The county tax digest is still only going to grow about by 5%. And that still is a product of the decisions made at the local level to slow growth down. Due to revenue projections from the state of Georgia, we still look like we're going to get about $10 million in austerity cuts in the Q B money we get. For the seventh consecutive year, the mil rate will remain at 17.3 mils. We are not raising it. With this budget, we are projected still to have a fund balance of 12.09% at the end of the year. That number can change. And for, based on the G D O E information, we're still one of the lowest per pupil costs of the 12 districts in this area at $9,607.29. There's only one county that's below us, and that's Clayton County. And for the fit, and for the, also, we maintain our five-star efficiency rating of the state of Georgia for the sixth consecutive year. So let's talk about the budget for 2020 versus 21. If you look at the top, you'll see the local and state revenues. And what I want to point out to you is if you look at the state level and you see the $12 million increase from the 21 to 22 budget, that is mostly austerity money coming back to us. And that's what most of that is. Our growth is so low compared to like everybody else that we're not seeing a lot of growth in our Q B total numbers. If you look at the local level, you'll see it's almost 19.6 million. Most of that is coming from our avalanche tax. And I'll dive deeper into the local revenue, and there's a big portion of that that's also coming from our T V A T intangible tax and real estate tax. And we'll see how that changes as well. So totally, we're looking at about $31.7 million. A big chunk of that is, once again, coming from austerity reductions. They're coming back to us. So currently, we are budgeting 53. almost $4 million for revenue going into next year, which is about a 6.72% increase. If we look down at the expense levels, a couple of things I want to point out to you on that is instruction is going up 11.2, school admin's going up 1 million, maintenance operation is going up 3.2, and transportation is going up 800 to 8,000. Almost all of that is geared towards the opening of the new schools and the growth. The reason that maintenance operation is going up so much is we've got four brand-new buildings, of which one is a, one is a middle and one is a high school that are very large, plus the two buildings back here, that in terms of square footage, we have to have a lot of staff to support it. And also the cost of electricity, water, sewer, and all that as well. So that's why their budget's going so much. I will point out that transfers is going down by 1 point, almost 4. That is the amount of money we put on a budget last year to support school nutrition. We don't predict, we will have to support school nutrition this year. We can talk about that later as well. So in total, our expenses are only going up about $16.5 million, or about 3.35%. Currently, that will give us a expense budget of about 5, $511 million, which still shows which still shows we're earning a deficit at this point of about 7.7. Now, this does include a step increase. Step increase typically is costing us somewhere between $6 and $7 million. So you can see that if we did include the step increase, it would be closer to neutral. But we think it's very important to put a step increase in this budget this year. I think that number will go down a little bit, once we start getting final numbers from the state and the county. And we'll see how that looks as we get closer to June. Currently, our fund balance was $71 million when we opened. Currently, I can tell you, even though we had a $23 million deficit, my cash flow analysis shows it may only end at $1.6 million deficit, which means we're actually going to come out stronger than we thought we were when the whole COVID thing happened back in March. So right now, we're projected to end the year with $69.5 million. If we were to have a $7.6 million deficit, we would still end next year with a $61.8 million, which is 12.9% of your fund balance. Now, the reason that number might seem so lower than you is because you have to take the 61 and to divide it into your total expenditures, and your expenditures went up by 16.5 million. So as your expenditures go up, that 15% threshold becomes a larger and larger number. All right, so let's talk about a breakdown between salary benefits and operations. As you can see, instructions is 73, almost 73.5% of our budget, and that was about a 3% increase. I do want to point out that maintenance operation is about an 8.7% increase. And that, once again, that's because we had to put more money into the new buildings getting ready to open up. I don't expect that ever to have a big increase like that because we know growth has slowed down, and we don't have a lot of projects down the road for the next five years. And so that should be as large going forward. School admin, that's also big because we have to support the schools with staffing at the school levels. And transportation, again, we have to have additional buses. And we're adding some additional monitors and stuff to the bus fleet to handle the additional schools and the sectors. And you also, once again, you'll see the negative $1.37 million for transportation. This year, we saw a slight tick down in salary benefits, it's 89.20% of total budget. And operation went up slightly to 10.8. And it has to do with we have more buildings and more expenses there. If you want to look at it from a pie chart point of view, like a big look-down, you can see it's the old Pac-Man symbol there, where the blue takes up almost everything, and that's the instructional portion. And then everything else breaks down correspondingly in terms of the different segments of the pie. You can see that maintenance maze is a big chunk, school admin's a big chunk, central support's a big chunk, and the other ones kind of follow in there.
I always point this out at this time of the year in budget presentations. The national standard for instruction is 65%. So it's significant that in Forsyth County schools, you know, we're eight percentage points above that national standard, which we've always been, because this board has always put a premium on investing in the classroom first. And so I'm really proud of that number being at 73%.
Another Pac-Man picture is our salary benefits as a pie chart proportional to our operations. That tells me, as a CFO, that we have a very, very efficient operation budget because it doesn't take up that much of our total expenditures. I mean, it could be a lot different. And you go up north to some of the school systems where the schools are really old, and you've got buildings that are 50, 80 years old. I mean, they're just pouring money into the schools to keep them open. All right, so let's talk about what the salary benefit changes look like going forward for '22. As you can see, we're adding about 123.17 positions. This increase or change between now and June, depends on some final decisions we make. That's going to be about $9.2 million in total personnel we're adding. And then we add the step increase, the 5.8. The reason that's a little bit lower is because some of that step increase is included in that 9.2 number up there above. So I kind of backed it out, so you didn't look like it was over, looked like bigger than it should have been. I do want to point out that because we're opening the schools, we're adding 26 custodian positions. We're adding, of course, four assistant principals, two media specialists, 7.9 clerical. Of course, you have a Hope Elementary High School principal in there, some pairs. And then down here, you've got bus drivers, special education monitors, transportation, field coordinators, some additional custodians for the local buildings here that are non-school. And then, of course, the maintenance workers and some other additional positions that were approved during the budget talks. So these are all the positions that currently we have set up in the budget as new positions. Any questions on those?
Only half a nurse? Seems like it'd be more. Only half a nurse? Seems like it would need more.
That was based on the allotment formula that we have for nurses.
So maybe there's two somewhere. Okay.
All right, so let's talk about the general fund revenues and what that looks like. So earlier, when we were talking about how the changes in the environment have happened, we were very, very conservative in the current budget for '21 because we didn't know what direction the market was going. The money's coming a lot better than we thought. We were trying to figure out why. We know that Amazon's become a major player in home delivery. People stayed home most of the year, buying stuff with their zip code. They weren't going to stores outside of Forsyth. So that helped us a lot. A lot of people were getting all this money for stimulus checks and stuff. And they're like, let's go get us a new car, or go buy a new used car or whatever. That helped us as well. So we're actually seeing that trend continue in the month-to-month reviews we do on all the revenue going forward. So with that being said, right now, with a 5% growth, we're predicting about $10.7 million additional avalarm taxes. The TVAT, they're still coming in strong, better than they were last year. We're going to add about $2 million to that number for next year. The one that we're seeing the biggest growth in is intangible tax. I can't tell you how crazy the numbers are coming in with that this current year, and I wasn't predicting it. We're going to add $7.5 million, that number, for next year. The, excuse me, real estate transfer tax, it's still very, it's very stable on that. We're only going to add $50,000. The interest income is taking another huge drop. We're dropping down to $65,000 on that. In fact, that's about where we're going to end up this year. And of course, when you have about zero interest rates at the federal standards to 25 basis points, you can't make a lot of money off any, all the money you have sitting in the bank anyways. Other local revenue, right now, we've dropped that number. And the reason is, we just don't know what the fall's going to be like with COVID and how that might affect some of the sports or some of the rental of our buildings. So we kind of want to be a little cautious on that. Surplus sales is going to stay the same. Then, under your QB formula, we were projecting a 12% increase. Most of that was austerity money coming back. We're waiting for the initial numbers to drop on that, and once we get them, we'll update these numbers. Other state revenue sources, we're keeping flat. That's pretty much standard. That's a lot of our pre-K money and some other stuff we get as well. Federal indoor cost doesn't change much from year to year. And then, of course, the flood control funds, which we get in the year, we're projecting that to go up a little bit, just because of the amount of building going on and how the control funds are geared out to all the different counties based on that. So you can see that number is $503.3 million compared to 471 last year for an increase of almost 31.7. If you look down below, that'll kind of give you an idea what our property tax digest looks like on the initial numbers I got from Mary's department. So if we apply a 17.3 milage rate, that grosses out $238.3 million. The commission takes away almost $6 million away from us. That's what Mary's department charges us for the collection rate on that. I apply a 98.5% collection rate to that number, and that gives us $228.8 million, which is the $10.6 million increase. I will tell you that the cash flow analysis for the current year shows collecting, I had a 98.5% number for this year. We're collecting at 100% at that 98.5% number for the current year. So that number seems to work out pretty well for us.
So that's conservative, going 98.5?
Yeah, and like I said, we're exactly at 90, we're collecting at the 98.5% number that we budgeted for. I mean, I think we're ahead by $20,000 on 200-plus million. So I don't know how much closer you can get than that. And of course, the QB formula is made up of the actual earnings and the midterm. In the previous years, we've had more growth in terms of students, and we were looking at collecting $6 million for midterm. Our growth has slowed down. We had to change those numbers. We're about half the growth right now projected by the state. And right now, we're only projecting to put $3 million in the budget for midterm instead of six in the previous years. And that's, it looks like we're going to get about 2.97 this year, based on what we had happen. And we did budget it for six, so we're going to lose some money on this year for that part of that process. But that's going to be about a $12 million increase in total.
Do you know how the exemptions compare this year to last year off the top of your head?
I'm sorry, what's that?
The exemptions this year compared to last year, do you know?
If you look up there at the top, you'll see that the exemptions are 2.8. I think it's, we're projecting about a $300 million increase in the projections. That's $2.8 billion there. I think last year was closer to 2.5, 2.9, something like that. Any questions on that worksheet? All right. So one thing I do want to point out to you is the breakdown, the pie chart between state and local, the local keeps going up. And that's just because austerity cuts have hit us in the previous years, and our local fair share has really hit our, hit our local state funds a lot in the last couple of years. If you look at the milage rate history from 2000 and now, you can see that back in 2015, we raised the milage rate to 17.3, and it stayed there for the last seven years. This is your comparison of cost per FTE between us and the other counties. Like I said, this is based on 2020 data. So this will be almost two years old by the time we start our school year. We were at $50,784. You can see Clayton County is at $54,720, and Atlanta Public Schools at 12 was at $51,620. Both those school systems lost student count in those last October FTE. So there's a possibility that we went up and they've gone down. Now, it's a good chance that we probably are going to pass APS, but it'll be very close to where we are standing with Clayton.
I think we already have. I think we officially, we have officially passed them.
Okay.
Not by, by a smidge, but we have.
Henry County, interestingly, is just right behind us on spend level, in terms of how they spend their funds. Now, Henry County went through an interesting two-year period there where they had some issues with their collections on their local property tax. And they also were losing equalization money as well. That's what was hurting them. All right, school nutrition, our school food services. So the good news was, if you look at the bottom, you'll see beginning fund balance. Because the money we sent them, the $1.4 million, we were able to end the year with about $113,000 in the bank. That was it, fund balance. Currently, because there's a couple of things going on, for this entire school year, the federal government has allowed us to use the total free and reduced rate for all meals served, regardless of who we're serving them to. And we can serve them to anybody who came and picked them up. That allows us to get the maximum on money for every meal we serve, instead of having to have people pay for it. That has allowed us to build a potential fund balance up of about $2.2 million, which means we may end the year at about 2.3 to 2.5. That's incredible compared to where we were last year when we went through $2.8 million in like three months, because we were getting no revenue at all. So kudos to Tim and his department over there for doing a great job on that. What that allows us to do is not have to put money in the general fund for transfers this year.
It's a big turn for us.
We're predicting that they're going to have enough money coming in to squeak out some fund balance this year of about $176,000. It's going to be tight, but I think we can do it. And if that happens, they'll still end up with a positive fund balance at the end of next year.
That's good news for us. That was a big problem last year, so that's good.
Debt service, great news there. Money keeps coming in greatly, at a higher rate than we predicted in the previous years. When initially we had set the debt service account up, we were predicting they have only about a 20 to 25 million reserve balance at any one time. At the end of this year, we should be sitting on a $50 million reserve balance in our debt service account to use going forward. So that's a positive for us going forward in terms of paying debt off. That means we got a little leeway in there if something was to happen, a hiccup or something was to happen that we're not predicting. So that gives us some balance going forward. And that is the 2022 initial budget for this upcoming year. Any questions?
Okay, just, again, just a reminder, it is initial. We don't have the local numbers yet. So there'll be some adjustments along the way. I do want to thank Larry for all of his work with the individual department heads to get this to you early this year. And, and also, you know, again, to understand, it'll be probably early June before we have the final revenue numbers local. And then we'll see how we're ending this fiscal year as well in terms of our expenditures. We're doing really well. And so it's possible that our fund balance could creep up a little bit more based on current projections.
We went from 15 to 10%, basically, so to be up at 12 is better than we thought we'd be.
Absolutely.
It'll tick back up, so. Thank you for getting that done, so we've never had it that early, so much appreciated to get that work done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Next, we have construction update with Tom Lanning.
Good evening.
I saw some steel today.
So we're pleased to report, for East Forsyth High School, we obtained the certificate of occupancy on March 30th. Similarly, on Hendricks Middle School, we obtained the certificate of occupancy April 1st. And for ACE, Academy for Creative Education, we achieved the certificate of occupancy in mid-March. So, you know, for all three, big picture, I think what we've learned over the years, when we are able to finish construction early, like we have in these three cases, it's just a much orderly sequence for the follow-on activities. Information technology gets more complicated each year, gives them a little more time. Furniture, I think the example of that, last summer when we opened up Pools Mill Elementary School, right? The, the additional time of administration getting into the school just lends itself to a much smoother opening. So we think we got a big benefit there. And in East Forsyth's case, spring practice football starts April 26th, so great to get that started. So for the projects remaining under construction, Focal Performing Arts Center, the exterior is nearing substantial completion. There's a few different angles. The interior is not real photogenic. We are finishing much of the interior finishes in the auditorium, but we still have the 55-foot scaffolding that allows us to reach the ceiling and walls. That comes down probably in another five, six weeks. And then we'll be sharing with you some of those exciting photos. This is just a photo of the entry lobby. So you see some of the interior finishes coming together. Similarly, exciting at New Hope Elementary School. It's always a grind getting out of the ground, especially during the winter, but we've got that risk part of the development behind us, or substantially behind us as site work is substantially complete. Much of the slavon grade is now placed at New Hope Elementary School. And you see structural steel being erected. There's a few shots. So we're in good shape for that opening next spring, looking ahead a year. Simultaneously, we have six projects that are about to start construction in various stages. You see the first three already in pre-construction. Material expediting taking place. We'll begin construction in May on those three. Additionally, for Little Mill and North Forsyth Middle School, we've gone through the procurement process. We'll be making that recommendation to you as a board for the general contractors at the April 20th board meeting. And in just a couple of days, we've got the last bid for North Forsyth High School CTE. Any questions, comments on the program?
No, and just special thanks for when you gave us a tour, us and the commissioners, the tour of East Todd. It was much appreciated and very exciting to see the insides of that, so it was beautiful. Beautiful. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Tom.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any needs for any future agenda items, anybody? Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel and student educational records for the affidavit?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Lindsay, all in favor? That's unanimous. All righty.